Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. If you are here today appearing, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your names for our commission's reporter. If you're here to testify, introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in. With that being said, Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
I'll do the motion. A motion to approve the minutes of the fourteenth and nineteenth meetings and the regular and executive session meeting, executive session minutes of the seventeenth meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Then moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro. O'Donnell.
Aye. The minutes of the fourteenth and the nineteenth meetings and the regular and executive session minutes of the seventeenth meeting are approved. Let's move into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two-one dash two-two-three-seven-five Onoya LLC. Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant, present to my left and behind me is owner Tatsuya, spelled T-A-T-S-U-Y-A, Ono. We have no changes to the investigative report. I'd like to let the commission know that the temporary liquor license was approved on November fifth, however, they have not opened for business yet.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has the statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Ms. Harai, do we have any registered protesters?
There are none.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-three-seven-five.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number two-one dash two-two-three-seven-five is approved.
Thank you Commissioners.
You're welcome. Let's go into the special license applications and the caterers license application. Agenda item number two, applications number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-six dash one, two and including two-one dash two-two-five-seven-six dash twelve. The Pearl Golf Management LLC. Mr. Uioka.
Hold on, we're just confirming that he's in the room. There he is. Yeah, he's in the room, we just need to get him to start video and unmute. He's on the other page. Okay, he's ready to go.
Okay, Mr. Uioka, you can proceed.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Ms. Harai, Robert Uioka on behalf of Pearl Country Club. Also maybe present on this call is Edward Kagayama, he is the general manager. At this time, I'd like to request a continue of this matter to December seventeenth. We are still having ongoing discussions with the liquor licensing staff regarding the amendment to the management agreement.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
I'm sorry, Mr. Uioka, you said December seventeenth, next week?
Yes, please.
Motion to continue, agenda item number two, applications number two-one dash two-two-five-seven-six dash one through and including two-one dash two-two-five-seven-six dash twelve. To December seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. So agenda item number two is continued to December seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Uioka. Okay, so let's call agenda item number five, application number two-one dash two-two-six-two-seven, Big City Diner YPO LLC.
Robert Uioka on behalf of Big City Diner YPO LLC, also on the call maybe Lane Roach, he's the member or owner of Big City Diner. This involves a catering liquor license application. I submitted, there was some issue in the report about a lack of a catering contract. So I did prepare and submit a catering contract that specified the terms and conditions of the catering agreement, including the type of foods served. There's one thing I wanted to mention on the investigator's report, it says no minors, oh, you may have some minors if there are minor golfers. And if they were to go into the restaurant, what have you, but not very few, not many minors, but maybe a few only.
Okay, very good. Commissioner?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Uioka, how does this request impact the prior agenda item that has been continued to next week?
Well, this particular agenda item does not involve a management agreement because control of the property, probably premises will be with Big City Diner and outside parties. So this is the way that we're getting this until we can resolve the management agreement issue. So it's kind of our last effort, we tried the temporary application, then we tried the special application, then we still ran into that management agreement issue. So this is our Plan C, if you will, to try to get continued service at Pearl Country Club because it's solely so essential since the lease expired that we need to get some kind of liquor service going and hopefully we can get to January fifteenth and we'll, I hope we can get the management agreement issue resolved by then.
Okay, so this particular request, you requested it effective as of Saturday through January fifteenth of next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-six-two-seven.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number five is approved.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Uioka, hold on a minute.
Yes.
Do you have your other clients available?
Absolutely, we are available.
Okay, let's go to agenda item number seven. Is that yours, sir?
Thank you so much, yes. Robert Uioka on behalf of Voyager Forty-Seven, also on the call is Scott Miyasato. He's a senior vice president, general counsel of Alberger Hospitality Group. First name S-C-O-T-T, last name M-I-Y-A-S-A-T-O. Also present is Mike Schaaf, first name M-I-K-E, last name S-H-A-F-F. He is the vice president of hotel operations of Alberger Hospitality Group, excuse me. This involves a temporary reduction of premises to allow Hula Grill to take over temporarily the Voyager Forty-Seven premises. We did have a discussion with investigator regarding the designation of a liquor storage area, fifty-five square feet. We did submit an amended floor plan and we understand that the investigator and the licensing staff is satisfied with the amended floor plan.
Thank you, Mr. Uioka, you are very fast. So for our commission reporter, let me officially read agenda item number seven, request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-seven, K-S-L-R-L-M LLC. Commissioners?
There's no questions. My motion is to approve request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-seven.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number seven, request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-seven is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number eight, request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-eight, Hula Grill Waikiki LLC. Mr. Uioka.
Sorry Chair, sorry Chair, we need to go back to agenda item, are we going to agenda item number three after that?
I would like to take, I would like to take care of Mr. Uioka, please.
Okay.
He will be finished unless he has adjudication.
No, no adjudications today.
Yeah, I actually have one other, number twelve.
Robert Uioka on behalf of Hula Grill Waikiki, also present on the call, Mr. Andrew Crocker, he's the general manager of Hula Grill Waikiki. This involves a temporary extension of premises whereby Hula Grill is going to be temporarily occupying and operating Voyager Forty-Seven located in the Alberger Waikiki Beach Hotel.
Very good. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-eight.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number eight, request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-eight is approved.
Thank you.
Let's move to, let's move to the final appearance by Mr. Uioka and that would be agenda item number twelve. Request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-six.
And you, Robert Uioka on behalf of Aroma Cafe, doing business as Hawaiian Aroma Cafe. This involves a request to extend a previous approval. This premises located in the DFS Waikiki that hasn't been opened, so we haven't been able to get our liquor license issued. We're in six months, we're hoping it'll reopen and we can get that license issued. Also present on the call, I'm sorry, maybe Jonathan Rotman, she is the owner, first name J-O-N-A-T-H-A and last name R-O-T-M-E-N-S-C-H.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-six.
Second.
Then moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twelve, request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-six is approved.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Uioka.
Yes.
Mr. Uioka.
Yes.
Let me say one thing.
Yes.
We're not setting a precedent here. I'm just trying to clean this agenda up and make it so.
No, I really appreciate the accommodation, thank you so much.
Okay, have a great weekend, we'll see you next week.
You too, take care, thank you so much.
Aloha.
Thank you.
Go Red Sox.
Go Red Sox, take care.
Cora is back.
He's back, thank you.
Let's call agenda item number three, Ms. Harai.
Yep.
Okay, this is application number two-zero dash two-one-seven-zero-eight, H-two-O-U-S-A Inc. Mr. Luke.
As the record reflect, Wayne Luke, for the applicant, I need a continuance to January twenty-first, two thousand twenty. The parties are still negotiating.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Commissioners?
Motion to continue, agenda item number three, to January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in, excuse me, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number three, application number two-zero dash two-one-seven-zero-eight is continued, what was that date again, please?
January twenty-one.
January twenty-one, oh, that's a nice date, January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Okay, Mr. Luke, are you prepared for agenda item number eleven?
Yes, I am.
Okay, this is agenda item number eleven, request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-two, Peking Duck Express.
As the record reflect, Wayne Luke, as counsel, we have no changes to what has been submitted.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-two.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number eleven, request number two-one dash two-two-six-zero-two is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, are we going back to agenda item number?
Four.
Ms. Harai.
Four.
Four. Four, that is correct, thank you very much. With that being said, I have, let me call the agenda item first. Agenda item number four, application number two-one dash two-two-three-six-zero, PLC dash KBH Management Company LLC. For the record, I have a conflict here, so I will wait to go into the spare room.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Christina Ohira representing the applicant. My last name is spelled O-H-I-R-A and in the room is also the manager of the applicant, Jonathan McManus. His last name is spelled M-C-M-A-N-U-S. If you don't mind, I just was going to have a brief thing, okay, perfect.
Go ahead.
So I know you, oh. Sorry, continue.
No, Ms. Ohira, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. We submitted a supplemental letter shortly after the hearing last week along with an amendment to the HMA that clarified the roles of the parties. And I know, so that letter was long and covered all of the points in detail, so I won't, you know, rehash that all unless you have specific questions. But I think what we really want to convey is that possession and control, you know, is achieved in a number of ways. I think, you know, one way is obviously there are leases, which is probably the common way that investigators are used to seeing where property interest is conveyed and lease situations are used where the la fee pays landlord rent for the privilege of operating a business at the premises. Hotel management agreements are a different type of business arrangement. In that arrangement, the owner pays the manager to take possession and control of the premises and pays them a fee to operate the business on their behalf. Fundamentally, the two instruments achieve the same thing, but are different, you know, based on the goals of the parties and their business arrangement. And in this particular situation, the HMA is appropriate for the owner's arrangement with Mr. McManus's company and that's why they are, you know, the hotel manager and which is why they are the applicant on this application. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you, Ms. Ohira, for, excuse me, for providing the commission with the first amendment to the HMA and also your December seventh letter. I found that to be very helpful and very responsive to the questions I had last week, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, Commissioners, I entertain a motion to convene into an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
I will also vote aye, we are now in executive session. And we're now back from executive session. Commissioners, any more questions or a type of action?
Yes Chair, a motion to approve temporary license application number two-one dash two-two-three-six-zero.
Second.
It's been moved in second and your votes, please, Commissioner Lee.
I vote aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion is carried, thank you, Ms. Ohira.
Thank you, thank you for taking the time to read my long letter.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you Commissioners, thank you.
Can we have the chair back? There he is.
Are we ready, so this is going to be calling agenda item number six, that correct?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-five, PJ Honolulu LLC.
Okay, she's in room one-one-one.
Okay, Ms. Anoy.
Yep, she's ready.
Okay. Proceed, Ms. Anoy.
Yep. We contacted our next place of current restaurant.
No. Could you introduce yourself and spell your name?
My name is Naoko from PJ Honolulu LLC. I'm an administrator of the company.
Can you spell your name, please?
First name is Naoko, N-A-O-K-O, last name is Inoue, I-N-O-U-E.
Okay, very, very good, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Anoy, did you see the licensing report for this matter?
Okay.
Yes, did you see the licensing investigative report?
Report, about two reports? Can I explain?
Did you see the report issued for this?
Yeah, I saw your reports.
On the second page, it indicates that the license that for the space next door needs to be rendered or placed in safekeeping. And that would be the condition of the commission approving it, do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve temporary application number two-one dash two-two-three-six-zero. I'm sorry, that's the wrong, we're on the wrong one.
Agenda item number six.
Is that correct?
No.
I'm sorry, my fault. Motion to approve.
Go ahead ma'am, you got it.
I'm sorry, motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-five.
Second the motion.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number six, request number two-one dash two-two-five-nine-five is approved. Excuse me. Let's move on to agenda item number nine, request number two-one dash two-two-six-two-six, Aloha Beer Company, Mr. Shinzato, please.
Shinzato authorized agent along with Dave Campbell, general manager and authorized agent. We are asking the commission to allow us to move into the space formerly used by Patai Atai. We have submitted a request for extension of premises separately.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Shinzato, what is the status of the license for the space that you seek to extend into?
I believe it's still in safekeeping.
Okay. Are you aware of whether that licensee is on notice of this hearing today?
We have been communicating with Keith Kiuchi, I believe he's representing licensee.
Are you able to make any representation in terms of his position on your request?
No, I wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Thank you.
Is he on an adjudications matter?
No, he's not, he's not on, in the room today. I will confirm that the license is in safekeeping, the Patai Atai is in safekeeping and that the licensee was CC'd on the notice of hearing for this request.
I make a motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, Ms. Harai, the roll, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. We are now in executive session. We're back, we're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or a type of action?
Yes Chair, Mr. Shinzato, does your client have a lease agreement for the additional space that you're requesting?
Can have Dave Campbell answer that. He's also on the call.
Okay.
Yeah, currently we're working on the finishing touches on the lease agreement. It's actually the partner of mine in Aloha Beer Company is also the managing partner and owner of the building. So I think we have a. Yeah, we're looking on a, we're working on our finalized draft, but it's all in the same house, so to speak.
And Mr. Shinzato, did you submit a proposed floor plan with your request?
Not with this request to the commission. The floor plans were submitted with the request for extension of premises, which has been submitted and it is being worked on.
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused, I thought this was a request to permanently increase the licensed premises.
We're asking permission because of the situation with the other license covering the premises.
And due to that, because we've had a, because we've had a situation of this nature before and in that situation, we asked them to provide either a lease agreement or to have the property owner appear or write a letter stating that they are or have leased the premises to your client. Would you folks be able to provide that?
Yes, I did provide a letter from Macro Pacific. I don't know if you folks received it.
Actually, it's been distributed and it's probably in the desk folder. So I have two copies over here.
Okay.
We can either take a little recess or I can read you, the letter is actually just two paragraphs.
Okay, Ms. Harai, for the rec, can you read that letter into the official record?
Okay. This letter is dated December eighth, two thousand twenty, from Steve Sombrero, managing partner of Macro Pacific LLC on Macro Pacific LLC letterhead. "To whom it may concern, this letter is to confirm that Macro Pacific LLC is the current owner of the property located at seven-zero-eight Queen Street. It is my intent as the owner of the reference property to lease the space to Aloha Beer Company for the purpose of expanding their current licensed premise. Request number twenty-one dash two-two-three-one-zero for Aloha Beer Company LP, license number P-zero-zero-one-one. It has come to our attention that New Bangkok Inc. DBA Pa... It has come to our attention that New Bangkok Inc. DBA Pataya Thai Restaurant still holds a license tied to this address. Pataya Thai had a lease with a previous property owner and vacated the space when Macro Pacific closed on the property and took ownership in October of twenty eighteen. They have not had any ties to this property since twenty eighteen, nor will they in the future.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Shin Sato, is the proposed extension, uh, adjacent to Aloha Beer?
Yes, it's connected.
Okay. And is it accessible from the interior as opposed to going outside to the street to get from one space to the other?
Uh, there's two access points, one from the sidewalk on Queen Street, and also from what was a parking area used as a, currently used as a beer garden. So it's an open space. So there's two exterior doors from which you can enter, or actually three from the back.
And are the two spaces, um, within the same physical building?
The Pataya Thai building is a separate building. Next to it is, looks like a parking, parking lot. And then the original Aloha Beer building is, uh, on the other side. So there's building, parking lot, and building, all connected.
Okay. And do you know, um, it sounds like the letter that Ms. Hori read into the record that the licensee of Pataya Thai, had a lease with a prior owner of that property. Do you know what happened with that lease?
No, no, I don't.
Very, thank you.
Commissioners?
Okay, if there's no further questions, um, motion to approve request number two one dash two two six two six.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
I'm gonna vote, I went reservations.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda on, item number nine, request number two one dash two two six two six is approved.
Thank you.
Let's move to, uh, Agenda Item number ten. Request number two one dash two two six two nine, Creekside Lounge. Sean Garlet.
There she is. She's in room one one one. There we go.
Please introduce yourself and spell your name for our reporter, ma'am.
Yes, um, Sean Garlet, Creekside Lounge, and the spelling is S-H-A-W-N-E-G-A-R-L-I-E-P-P.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Ma'am, this is a request to, um, temporarily extend your licensed premises. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, um, you folks are looking to extend it into the parking lot?
Yes, I have landlord approval for that.
Okay. And, um, you folks have enough staff to be able to monitor it?
Absolutely.
Two AM is pretty late, so the folks are gonna be able to manage it?
They're still stuck. Yes, we have a door guy, and we also have temperature checkers and everything.
And this is, is so that you folks can, um, uh, abide by the social distancing rules?
Correct.
I do have a question. Um, is your intent to provide any sort of music for live music?
Outside? No. Just tables and chairs?
Okay.
Right. Uh, motion to approve request number two one dash two two six two nine.
Second.
And moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number ten, request number two one dash two two six two nine is approved.
Thank you, Commission.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Thank you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Uh, let's move to Agenda Item number thirteen. Is that correct?
It is.
Thank you, Ms. Hori. Agenda item number thirteen, request number two one dash two two six zero eight. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gota, appearing on behalf of KUY Restaurants Limited Liability Company, doing business as MW Restaurant. Appearing with me is Natalie Lee, a manager. Uh, for the record, it's my understanding the prior license at this premise was in existence, uh, until June of this year.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Request number two one dash two two six zero nine.
Second.
Then, um, moved in second, um, Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number thirteen, request number two one dash two two six zero eight is approved.
Thank you.
Let's move on. Mr. Gota, to Agenda Item number fourteen, request number two one dash two two six zero nine. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gota, appearing on behalf of KUY Restaurants Limited Liability Company. Appearing with me is Natalie Lee, a manager. Again, for the record, it's my understanding the prior license at this premise was in existence until June of this year. This is for the restaurant space on the third floor of the Velocity Honolulu Complex.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Mr. Gota. Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two six zero nine.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number fourteen, request number two one dash two two six zero nine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Uh, this is the number one, nine, oh nine, Mazur.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gota, appearing on behalf of Mazuru LLC. Uh, this is, there was minor changes to the floor plan that had to be made when they were constructing the premise. So this request is just to have those minor changes approved.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Um, point of order, Ms. Hori, um, are we to approve, just approve, uh, a motion to approve the request? Cause there's no number on it attached to it.
Yeah, you, you could just, um, hold on a second. Uh, I guess technically speaking, what you would be approving is the amended, uh, floor plan associated with application number nineteen dash one five two zero nine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to approve the request of a new floor plan, uh, related to application number one nine dash one five two zero nine.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one five two zero five, uh, is approved with the new floor plan.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Let's go into, um, can I have a type of, uh, action, Commissioners, for Agenda Items number sixteen through eighteen?
Yes, Chair. Motion for the adoption of decision in order for Agenda Items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. The adoption of decision in order, Agenda Items number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are approved. Are we ready for adjudications?
Yes, Chair. Um, good afternoon, Deputy Corporation Counsel Paige Ogata.
Calling Agenda Item number nineteen, Himalayan Kitchen LLC.
We don't believe, uh, the licensee is in the, is in the, is in the room.
Um, Chair and members of the Commission, I was unable to make contact with Mr. Baznet. Um, I did leave a message at the restaurant, but I didn't receive a call back. Um, I am going to move to continue this matter so that I can try again to make contact with Mr. Baznet. Um, I'm gonna ask to move this until January fourteenth.
Um, motion to continue Agenda Item number nineteen, um, Himalayan Kitchen to January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item nineteen is continued to January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Calling Agenda Item number twenty, Matsumoto.
Hi, I'm talking on behalf of the, I could be Kakimoto because of the language, so we are DRC.
And DRC Limited.
DRC Limited. Uh, we we are ready to submit our, the service report as for the last year. It, it's already report, it's already submitted, but sorry for the, our GLS, and that is because of the the discommunication between our attorney, between the store managers.
Thank you. Hold on, Mr. Kakimoto. Um, uh, Ms. Ogata, would you like to read the charge, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, two thousand twenty, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And, uh, Mr. Kakimoto, how would you like to plead? You can accept the charges, deny the charges, or plead no contest to the charges.
We accept the ch- we accept the charges.
Thank you. Um, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty, the licensee accepts the violation.
And, uh, Ms. Ogata, your recommendation, please?
Recommendation is two hundred fifty dollar fine. Um, they did submit the report thirty-five days late and paid any, um, GLS that they owed.
Thank you. Okay, um, and sir, you, would you like to make any additional statements? No, okay. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty, the recommended fine is approved. Calling Agenda Item number twenty-one, Hawaii Yacht Club.
We on?
Yes.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Hasselman. I'll spell that for you. J-E-F-F-H-O-two S's, E-two L's, M-A-N. I'm an officer of the club, and, uh, present with me is Sam Brecher, B-R-E-C-H-E-R. He is our office manager, and, uh, he has given me a background on this. I can tell you what he's told me, and, uh, we can go from there, if that would be suitable.
Hold on, sir. Uh, thank you for introducing yourself. Ms. Ogata, please read the charge.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, two thousand twenty, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending July, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hasselman, uh, how would you like to plead?
Well, I think we're not guilty, so I think I should say not guilty.
Uh, if you plead not guilty, then, um, we will need to schedule you for a contested hearing, uh, for when the prosecutor is prepared.
Okay, let's not go to that for a minute here.
You can accept the charges, you can deny the charges, or plead no contest to the charges.
No contest, it would be fine with me.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second. Ms. Hori, the role, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ogata.
Um, the recommended fine is six hundred dollars in this case. They were thirty-six days late, and this is the second time in the last five years that they have been late filing their GLS. The first time was in fiscal year twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
If I, if I can make a statement.
Please make your statement.
All right. When the COVID hit, we were closed down, like everybody else. We lost all our employees, including our office manager and accountant, and when, when things got back to normal, so, so to speak, although we're not back to normal yet, we found that, we tried, we attempted in good faith to file this in a timely manner. We could not get into the system to make our filing. We contacted your department, and we told them we couldn't get in the system before it was due, and the department could not get us in until after the expiration of the time period. And for those reasons, and the fact that we pay twenty thousand dollars every month to the state, and we're taking money out of our members' pockets beyond dues trying to keep the float, six hundred dollars is a big hit for us. I would respectfully ask the Commission to waive any kind of a penalty under these circumstances. Thank you very much.
May, may I add an additional comment? My name, my name is Sam.
Yes, go ahead.
Take your time. So I, uh, communicate with Stacy Jung with the Liquor Control Board. Um, she had contacted our previous accountant on her personal cell phone to ask about the status of our filing. Um, our previous accountant told her that we were no, that she was no longer an employee of the club, and at that point, our account was locked. Uh, when I went on to try to file, I could not, and I had to get the account reactivated. Once it was reactivated, I still could not see Hawaii Yacht Club in the system, so I contacted, and I had a back and forth conversation, and it was, uh, discovered that there was another thing that needed to be activated, that I needed to have, uh, a form- thing that needed to be activated, that I needed to have a a form filled out and have my access approved. And once that was done, which occurred on September third, is when I gained access to the system, I filed and paid um all the outstanding uh dues and such on September ninth.
We have nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Ogata, uh would you like to add anything?
I have nothing to add, but um we do have Akiko Reyes standing by um who may be able to answer any questions that the commissioners do have.
Hello, Ms. Reyes.
Hello. Um yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. Make your representation, please.
What licensee has stated is correct. Yes, they did have a problem um accessing uh L C I S system. However, uh L C I S uh system generates all the history of all the accesses and what um Sam um is telling us is all took in after the due date. Uh originally, when we generate uh not filed licensee uh list, we contacted Teresa, uh Teresa my staff contacted on August twenty-fifth and then she contacted Sam about not filing the report and then from there he communicated with Stacy and then they had to address some issues because he didn't have a user access. But that already uh all took after the due day August fifth, August fourth, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um and uh you folks stated, I'm sorry, uh Mr. Brefer.
Brecher.
That Brecher, the that the premises was closed. When were you folks, when did you folks close?
Uh we were closed from uh March until I believe it was uh beginning of July. I also wanted to notice that in the correspondence with Stacy, she did say that the due date for uh F Y fiscal year two thousand twenty was uh supposed to be July thirty-first two thousand twenty, but extended to September third, which was the same day that I gained access and then I filed on the ninth. So I understand you're saying that August fifth was the um the filing date, but that is not what I was uh told by. It actually looks like it was uh uh yeah, Stacy Jung who had said that to me.
And that's not correct either because I have her email here. The home email dated September first and letting them know that due date was, that's the communication she's having on the September first. Uh incorrectly typed the due date as September thirty. Immediately she re um resent that email to you stating that that's incorrect. She we she meant August third. That email was sent on September first.
I I do see the her correction on that email thread.
And that was sent on September first.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Um all right. And you folks have since submitted your G L S and paid all of your uh additional fees or any fines associated?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes, can you can you confirm that they have um submitted their G L S now and everything is up to date?
Yes, they filed a report on September ninth. Everything is paid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um okay, are you folks currently open?
Yes, partially. We're affected by the tiered system with uh COVID for maximum capacity.
Okay. Um I I I am feeling sympathetic today, so can you folks please make sure that this doesn't happen again?
Yes, of course.
Um motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-one, a letter of reprimand shall be issued.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Aloha.
Calling agenda item number twenty-two, this is um Proof Public House.
Aloha, my name is Serena Hashimoto. I'm representing ground level LLC Proof Public House.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August four two thousand twenty, a report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first two thousand nineteen ending in June thirtieth two thousand twenty in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four subsection C of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ms. Hashimoto, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, uh Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Chair and members of the commission, this is the second time that licensee has been late filing their G L S. They were forty-nine days late. Recommended fine is eight hundred dollars.
Ms. Hashimoto, what happened? Go ahead.
I I would just like to be a little bit honest and vulnerable with you. Um first, I would really like to thank Pandy. Without Pandy's help, I don't know that I would have been able to complete the G L S at all. Um I uh I I uh suffered um a mental health issue and was in Kekel Ward for a period of time and um have regained my my mental stability, but I was not able to perform the clerical duties associated with um the running of the bar. The bar has been closed since July um and it has not been open and it was a tremendous blow to uh my uh stability. And I I would like to ask for lenience with the fine.
I'm sorry to hear about your hardships, Ms. Hashimoto. Um do you have plans to reopen?
No, there there is no plans at at this time. I'm I'm not uh I'm not able to can uh continue in that line of work.
Okay, and um is the license currently in safekeeping or have you um taken any action whatsoever on the license?
The currently, the bar is locked with uh with lo- I haven't had access since July. There's locks on the bar that I did not put there. Um and I've notified the um the the building managers uh that the the lease has been abandoned and um the the building remains vacant. So I'm doing what I can to ensure that um it that I don't I don't know what will happen. I don't know how to proceed to tell you the truth. But I'm walking away, I've walked away from the business.
Okay, thank you. Uh commissioners, any questions? Uh motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
And moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-two, a letter of reprimand shall be issued.
Ahalo mahalo. Good afternoon.
Please take care, Ms. Hashimoto.
Ahalo.
Calling agenda item number twenty-three, Siam Paradise Restaurant.
My name is Sutti Nuyanat, S U T T H I N E E W U I Y A N A T. Yes.
Licensee failed to file with the Ho- with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August four two thousand twenty, a report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first two thousand nineteen and ending June thirtieth two thousand twenty in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four subsection C of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ma'am, how would you like to plead?
Contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Then moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is the second time that licensee has been late. The first time was in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
Ma'am, would you like to make any comment?
Yes, I'd like to.
Thank you. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-three, the recommended fine is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, the Nighthawk.
Yeah, I mean, what he's saying with all terms and stuff, everything happened.
Mr. Ry.
Um I'm trying to determine if Mr. Trong Kam Sataya.
Hello? Can you hear me?
It's him. All right.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, my name is Eddie Trong Kam Sataya, uh E D D I E T R O N G K A M S A T A Y A. Representing the Nighthawk.
On or about July nineteenth two thousand twenty, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to it, violating the terms of Office of Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number two thousand twenty dash nineteen COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, second amendment to Ho'ouulu'i Honolulu four point oh dated July fourteen two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
How would you like to plead?
Plead a no contest, please.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, um the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Ogata.
Chair and members of the commission, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Uh can you provide us a little bit more detail, Ms. Ogata?
Um the licensing invest- I'm sorry, not licensing. Our investigators went out um to do random checks of the businesses and um the Nighthawk was observed to have open cold bottles of alcohol available to customers thirty-six minutes after closing or after the time that they were supposed to have closed as ordered by the mayor.
Okay. Any comments?
Just uh like most places, we're struggling with all the restrictions and I can't really afford to pay a staff. I'm the only front of the house staff and uh closing um you know at ten o'clock, you know, like just it's it's on me. I don't have any busboys or waitresses. You know, it's been a challenge just to put away everything. We weren't trying to be open or subvert the law in any way. Just know that um your investors have come since this incident and uh we've been in compliance. Uh losing the twenty-four hour, being forced closed twenty-four hours was a big loss financially. I mean, again, I just uh if if anything, just I would like to request either a letter of reprimand or reduced fine. Thank you very much.
Uh you have a new business, correct? I believe that we approved this shortly before the pandemic hit.
That is correct.
How long have you been in business?
This January.
Um hearing that and hearing as this was a first time violation, um my motion is issued to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Then moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-four, a leper- letter of reprimand shall be issued.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to agenda item number twenty-five. The Nighthawk.
Oh, Mr. Trong Kam Sataya, can you introduce yourself one more time, please?
Hey, uh Eddie Trong Kam Sataya, E D D I E T R O N G K A M S A T A Y A.
On or about August fifteenth two thousand twenty, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to it, violation of Office of Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order number two thousand twenty dash twenty-three COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, act with care, do not gather, signed on August sixth two thousand twenty in violation of two section two eighty-one thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statute.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest again, please.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
And moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea is accepted.
Um recommended fine is five hundred dollars again for this one. Um the violation observed by our licensee, our, I'm sorry, investigative staff was that um the manager on duty was not wearing a mask when they did come into the establishment.
Any comments?
Yeah, we uh I wasn't wearing a mask because we wore clothes. It was just myself and my business partner together in the establishment. When the investor gifts came in. And uh again, we were just, you know, having a discussion, a business discussion, and we wore clothes. There was no other people in the set.
Thank you. Ms. Ogata, anything to add?
Um the only thing that I have to add is there was one more person um that was in the bar at the time, but I don't, I haven't seen any notes in um in the investigative report that state that there were any um there was any consumption of alcohol at the time. They were shut down for twenty-four hours.
Thank you. All right, um motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Ry, the role please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Ms. Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twenty-five, the recommended fine is approved. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, uh do we have any administrative matters, Mr. Ry?
No, not uh nothing in addition to what was circulated earlier today by email.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have anything, any comments?
I would like to um say thank you for being reappointed.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks? Wow.
Good job.
None of the five years of suffering.
You're doing a great job.
You're both glad for punishment. Five more years and you're and you're thanking him?
Well, I'm thanking him. Good evening. Take care.
Thanks, Todd.
All along. Good night.